Washington County Board of Commissioners work session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington and I'm joined this morning by Vice Chair Phi, Commissioner Rogers, and Commissioner Treese. Commissioner Willie is excused. I would suggest that for the letter, we deal with that down in Board and Leadership Communication because we have two topics before our meeting starts at 10:00. Do any commissioners have any questions about what is before us today for our formal business meeting? Okay, looks pretty straightforward. So our staff has suggested that we reconvene after our business meeting back into work session at approximately 10:45. So, the next item on our agenda is review of C WAC applicants for District Three and business positions. Welcome to Joe Gall and Shannon Wilson.
Huggins.
I got your name wrong. Huggins. The light bulb finally went off. I'm sorry. I'll drink more coffee.
The day is young, correct?
There you go. Thanks for the excuse kindly.
Good morning Chair and Board members. Joe Gall with Water Services and I'm here with Shannon Huggins who has done the heavy work in terms of recruiting for these two positions. If you have any gaps or questions you might have. So we have two positions open currently on C WAC. Terry Song, who was our C WAC Chair back in December, you may recall, retired and became ineligible to be the Business Rep. So we lost Terry. C WAC unfortunately.
But can we rope him into a community position?
Well, there's a story here as always. So we had the sad passing of Mike McKillop in January, which actually opened up the District Three position. And Terry approached, I believe he probably called you and said, is there any chance for me to serve in that role because I'm in that district? And we thought, what a great opportunity to bring him back so quickly. Because he's only been one term. He was just beginning his second term. So that's one potential that we'd like to discuss with you and answer any questions is to have Terry be appointed to serve the remainder of Mike McKillop's term. And then we've been recruiting for the Business Position, Terry's Position, and we do have a candidate recently that appeared who works at Intel that we'd like to have for your consideration as well. So that's where we are. I don't know what kind of questions you might have that we can answer.
Well, let's see what the C W S directors have for you.
Terry's sensation, he contacted me as well. Sad that the position opened up, obviously, but Terry's a great guy and certainly the ground running and he'd be always not to accept him as that, in that position. So that would be my hope of you.
Thank you.
I'm a big thumbs up on both. There you go.
CPZI, I believe we'll be back in a few weeks with actually agenda items pointing both.
That'd be great.
Excellent, and you have some time.
Thank you.
Take ten minutes.
And quickly, thank you for maintaining those relationships with key people. I mean, that's really, that's so important and well done. Oh, I'm glad Terry's.
Shannon is on that on a daily basis. It's all the credit. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
I'm just really excited. I'm excited to have both of them on.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Well, I hope we haven't surprised L U T being just a few minutes early for this next topic, but it looks like all things transit is good to go. So welcome to Stephen Roberts and Erin Wardell. Will Diame be joining us?
Yes. He should be on his way down.
Okay, see, I thought I might catch somebody by surprise. Sorry about that.
That's okay, we can go ahead and get started.
Flying down the stairs. Different type of Zoom.
Well, good morning. My name is Erin Wardell and the Planning and Development Services Manager. And today, we are here to talk about the Washington County Transit Study. The outcomes of our briefing today are to share with you our initial findings and recommendations from this study and then seek the Board's input in advance of finalizing our transit study and receiving your acknowledgement later this year. The policy questions we'll ask you to consider at the end of this presentation are, do you support the findings and recommendations in the proposed transit vision? And is there additional information or briefings that you'll need before you're ready to acknowledge? There he is.
Could you anchor me just for a moment?
Yes.
Because this isn't the first time you've done a transit study, is it? Or is it?
Well, this one's a little bit different. So we've done a number of different transit studies for a variety of projects, including before we did our last major update of the Transportation System Plan. And we obviously work with our partners a lot at TRIMET in the cities. What's interesting about this study and what's different about it is that this work came out of the Transportation Future Study. When we looked at our 50-year vision of Washington County and what we need for transportation, one of the things we found in doing that technical work was that we could not throw enough transit at the system. I think our modeling was throwing, what, MAX trains every one minute through the Sunset Transit Center and they were awful. So it was one of the findings that we really took away from that study was, we need to think about this a little bit more. And we need to think about this in partnership with the cities of Washington County. Because if we all have an idea of what we want and we can hold hands and approach TRIMET together, we have a better chance of actually getting what we'd like to see for Washington County. So this was really an opportunity for us to take that step back and think comprehensively and work on building those relationships with our city partners.
Yep. Places elsewhere have taught us that if you can make it reliable, accessible, readily available, it's a great choice.
We do that, yeah.
Absolutely. So the project purpose was to, again, develop those relationships with our partners and find a way that we can develop a shared vision and create that roadmap so that we can have some of those conversations moving forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Diame Valentine, our Principal Transportation Planner.
Good morning. Apologies for showing up late.
We surprised you.
Yes.
Yay! You're actually still early.
Yeah, we are. So, I thank you. The project goals, as Erin mentioned, these were really built on a lot of previous work and concurrent work. So we are, there's a lot of work happening in this space. Our transit partners are very focused on improving transit service throughout the region. Washington County has the Transit Development Plan, which the Chair has really been involved with, built on a lot of those goals, built on what's reflected in our Transportation System Plan. So, working with our city and transit agency partners, as well as stakeholder groups who identify these kind of key goals, which really are intended to improve the transit experience for riders and hopefully attract new riders to the system. And recognizing that in order to do so, we have to provide a transit system that is equitable, affordable, improves our public health, environmental health, better connects people to opportunities, and improving our economic vitality, really thinking about that transit experience, you know, from getting out the door to getting to our final location. And then recognizing that this really is a partnership, that it takes county, cities, public, private partnerships to really make this a successful system. So our process entailed about 18 months of doing a deep dive into what our existing conditions are, really looking at best practices and opportunities that may be available to us throughout the county, acknowledging that the county is big, has a lot of different contexts and circumstances that may make different types of transit service more successful. We did some online engagements, in-person engagement, I'll talk about some of that in a little bit, kind of highlighting some of the key findings from those conversations. And then we have evaluated and provided this draft set of recommendations for a public review, which just wrapped up as of Friday. So in terms of what we heard from those community conversations, what's working well? It was seen as an affordable option. It's convenient for those who are using it. People enjoy the ability to avoid traffic and using their time more productively. And also, the partnership that we have with Ride Connection, people really saw the value that they, for those who are using that system, and wanting to really build on that. Some of the barriers that folks expressed, concerns around safety, not only getting to transit, but also on transit. Travel time, you know, the amount of time that it takes to get to certain locations in the county could be up to three, four times driving by seat lock, mid- seat vehicle. Stops just not located or services not located where people are or want to go to. Concerns about getting to transit, so whether it's lack of sidewalks, lack of state crossings, the service just isn't frequent enough, it's not meeting their needs in terms of times of operation, and then just lack of legibility of the system, so not being familiar with or aware of the transit and how it works.
All of that makes sense for users, but there is one heck of a lot of areas that are deserts in this county that the list would be very different. The barriers would be no service, not close. So did you mix any amount of those folks in, or is this predominantly users?
No, yeah, we actually, I think we get to that on our next slide, but we really tried to engage users, but also people who are not using transit, to understand kind of what some of those limitations are. Obviously, not having service is a major barrier for people using transit. But we did hear, in terms of our online engagement, we did try to differentiate and get an idea of what, if there was any themes between those who are using the system currently and those who are not. For both groups, transit travel time, you know, making things faster or reliable, that kind of came through in terms of what would either attract more users or using the system more frequently. The difference, there was some differences in terms of, you know, sense of safety for those who are using the system was lower on the list compared to the perception of feeling safe was being as a deterrent for those who are not currently using the system, which is interesting. But we did hear, you know, we want to see more comfort in using the system for those who are currently using the system and that they want it to be more convenient for all the trips that are being made for those who are using transit. And then in terms of those who are not currently using transit, we heard that it's just not fast enough, it's not meeting their needs in terms of traveling to their destinations and that that sense of safety really came through from those folks.
Perceived safety. They're not currently riding.
Yeah. But for them, it's perception is reality. So I wanted to also note, and I didn't include a slide on here, but we did have robust in-person engagement. We partnered with, I'm forgetting the name again.
Community liaison, yes.
Community Engagement Liaisons, really with the focus of engaging community members that have historically not been involved in these type of processes. So these were in-person conversations scripted, but somewhat informal, you know, talking to folks at bus stops and libraries, coffee shops, congregations, generally where people are and meeting them there to have these conversations and had a, you almost spoke to 300 folks through that process, geographically dispersed throughout the county and got a similar sense of that, that is, you know, there's definitely some themes that were reflected in that earlier slide. So there's a common sense of the need is clear, I think, from those community members as well.
But it, so those two slides were each titled online survey results. So in addition to this online, you had the 300 community conversations.
Yeah, and that's reflected in this slide here, the community.
Got it.
Yeah.
Because they're conversational, the summary that we do is different, it can't be as a percentage.
Right.
Summarizing.
We did gather some demographic information.
Yeah.
I have a question about the blue slide, not the red one, but the blue one. It said, one of the bars said, I feel safer while on the bus, I mean, or shuttle, but then it says 38%, 8.7%. So feel safer, the rest don't. Are the assumptions built into that?
Well, the question, the way this was framed, is what type of improvements would encourage you to use transit more frequently? And so those, yeah, 38% of the respondents said making the system safer or having a higher level of safety on the, on transit would make people consider using transit more frequently.
So it would be clearer if it said, I would, if I felt safer, I'd be more likely to take transit. Yeah.
Is there differentiation between bus riders and MAX riders?
I don't know if we really got to that level or were able to differentiate that through our survey.
That's fair. I just, I was just curious.
I think there's other studies out there about that particular experience. And I believe what they say, anecdotally at least, and TRIMET may have done some of this work, is that people sometimes feel safer on the bus because there's an operator there that they can see. And on a MAX train, there's not an operator there. And so we didn't get into that with our studies, but I think that's what other surveys have shown.
And that's, that's what I've seen in her as well. That's what I've seen. Thank you.
So I'm going to walk through a set of recommendations. We came out of this effort with eight kind of key recommendations, obviously very high level. The draft executive summary is, again, very high level. We have a supporting final report that we will be sharing once we wrap up this public comment period and have that available in April. But the key findings really help reinforce a lot of the good work that we've done. This first recommendation is really to focus our energy on those major corridors, the ones that have been identified through the regional high-capacity transit work that we were involved with, and identifying ways that we could better leverage bringing investment into these corridors and supporting, you know, whether it's federal or state funding to increase the quality of service within these corridors. And the rest of these recommendations really kind of better focus the energy and try and to encourage stronger investment in these corridors. We list these out, these are ones that we are working on currently, you know, tier-one categories being TB Highway, Southwest Corridor. And then we have a couple other tiers focused on the Beaverton to Bethany Corridor. New work that's come out of the West Side Multimodal Investment Study, the Sunset Transit Center to Hillsborough, and really focusing investment into North Hillsborough and deployment centers along that corridor. And then kind of lower-tier categories reflected in that high-capacity transit system. Our role at the local level is really to advocate for building out a frequent service grid. We have a fair amount of frequent service today and TRIMET, therefore, together, plan has committed to increasing frequent service in the county. We see this obviously as a 20-year plan and recognize that we really do need to see most of our major arterials have, you know, frequent transit service within the next one years. As I mentioned, really, the building on the success of the Ride Connection, those first-last-mile transit connector shuttles, community connector shuttles, this is a model that in areas that is not, that are not well-served by frequent service or fixed route service, this is a flexible, fairly dynamic, efficient model. And we see a lot of benefits. We have a network that's identified for longer-term areas that that could be an effective model. As we heard, that speed and reliability is a high priority for a lot of folks. And there's, along our major corridors, on frequent service routes, we see real opportunities for kind of targeted investments to improve those speed and reliability at major congestion points, major intersections. So we have a toolkit of some of those improvements and have identified kind of some of those potential priority locations, as well as the corridors that we would look to make those investments. And as the road authority, we have a direct role in supporting that work. And then what we've also done is, there's a lot of regional services that folks may or may not be aware of. We see an opportunity to better make those regional connections easier for folks, whether it's connecting to a service that goes to Tillamook or down to Salem or Amtrak or any one of the interconnecting services, as well as making connections to other modes easier as well. So at these major, major transit stops, there's opportunities to partner potentially to see other travel modes made more easily available, shared bike and ride, that kind of thing. And then in terms of providing better access, this is high on everybody's list, makes the system easier to access, whether it's better crossings, more sidewalks, better bike lanes, providing well-lit, kind of a safe environment once people get to the transit stop. And then there's programs and policies, you know, our partners, West Side Transportation Alliance are, you know, working in this arena, but we see that there's opportunities that we can better support, you know, from programmatic standpoint, incentivize and encouraging transit use. There's also, from a land use standpoint, parking policies, land use, concentrating land uses in certain corridors to better support transit. These are all elements that are, you know, pretty well ingrained already in our comprehensive planning work, but there may be some opportunities to better support them. And then recognizing, again, this requires a partnership. We've identified a fairly robust set of investments in this plan. More funding will be needed to support this over the next 20 years. And so just identifying opportunities for potentially increasing some of the funding and funding sources and synergizing kind of the funding conversations that are currently happening and how that may align with the vision that's outlined here. So this just, these maps are intended to kind of schematically illustrate what we have generated in terms of a vision for our service, again, reflecting that there's our major corridors, major frequent service corridors, high-capacity transit corridors, tiering those in terms of where we see them being feasible to implement, as well as that shuttle service vision, which builds on the Transit Development Plan work. And then we also reflect a capital investment priority, just identifying those high-capacity transit corridors, as well as corridors that we may want to target more speed and reliability improvements, and some specific locations that we've identified that would be, would benefit from speed and reliability improvements. So as I mentioned, we had the online open house, March 1st, on this draft summary. And so our questions for the Board today, generally speaking, you know, what kind of feedback? Do you support the findings and recommendations proposed in the transit vision? And then is there any additional information or briefings you need before acknowledging? We do intend on bringing back the final report for acknowledgement in April. Any questions?
Clarify, for acknowledgement, what will that actually do other than support your continuing to have conversations with local cities and if I'm working with them or for the UUAs yourselves to seek state and federal grants?
I think that's pretty much what it will do. It will probably give us a stronger footing in some of those conversations potentially, just making sure that there is general.
We've done this.
For that work moving forward.
It also sets up a record for us. For example, when we do launch our next major update of the Transportation System Plan, that we had this transit conversation, we acknowledged it on this date, and now we'd like to possibly implement some of those findings into the T S P as well.
Well, since my colleagues were still getting their thoughts together, I'll go first. I think this is great that you've done it. The other thing I recall from all the work that Washington County did with Metro on Climate Smart Communities, transit makes a huge difference with regard to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And we've done those studies, you've done this study, and 10 years has passed, almost. So I think we're, we should be able to move beyond, but we need to study more and be able to work with our state, federal partners to say, if you really want to achieve those goals, invest, invest. I do have one detailed thought. If we could go back to the slide with recommendation four, which is slide number 13. It's titled Speed and Reliability Improvements. Local jurisdictions that manage roads and traffic signals play an important role, blah, blah, blah. And small improvements can help riders save time in a big way. I'll never forget a day that I was out using transit, walking to run some errands, and I was on Jenkins Baseline. And it was a T Street. And it was a very hot day. So I, as a pedestrian, had to, in order to get some relief, because the traffic stop hand was up, I waited in the shadow of a post. And I realized there was virtually no traffic. There was no traffic on the side street, but there was a flashing left turn. And I, the pedestrian, was being put in a position politely to have to wait for the light signal. It didn't just turn the left flashing off and let me walk. It made me wait for a whole light cycle to go through. And it's like, wait a minute, we're Washington County, we own those signals. We don't have to wait for more money to have the authority for a transit plan to make changes like that. When are we going to start? The, now, I drive my car everywhere, right? But I walk too, and I bike too. But when I'm driving my car, I have the greatest ability compared to when I'm walking to quote-unquote make up time, right? to quote-unquote make up time, right? Compared to when I'm walking. And so I think we we need to start prioritizing those pedestrian crosswalks more so that people can save time getting to their bus stops. And I'm not sure, policy-wise, what that means we as a board need to consider consider to direct that. I'm just not familiar with. Why aren't we doing those low-cost things already? Given the the balance of power to time. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Beyond that, I'm really, really pleased that you've done this study, that you've done this outreach, very clear recommendations, go team, go.
And I think we have some really good examples of some of those smaller tactical investments that we have already been able to make, and you'll see some of that in the final part as well. Do you want to talk about the Cornell one eighty-fifth bus stop project, for example, as a small tactical improvement?
Yeah, I mean, in terms, that's more of a operational improvement for the bus, but we have piloted and
Those make a big difference.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you and those did involve some signal optimization and changing the phasing. But that have enabled the bus to bypass some of the congestion during peak periods. I mean, it's not utilized.
Big intersection.
But it is a big intersection. And so we have, I think we've seen, we did do a follow-up study and saw about a twenty percent savings times for buses during peak grid.
That's great.
So it is making a difference.
Yeah, that's the kind of recommendation that'll be in this study is there's a whole range. You can do a Southwest Corridor scale investment, which is huge and is going to have a great impact on the region. But we can implement some of those smaller, more tactical improvements. And as you're alluding to, we can do that ourselves. We don't need permission from anyone else to make improvements on county roads with county signals. Go ahead, Commissioner Teresa.
I have a I have a question. Thank you for this. It's very thorough and I appreciate the information. But I had an experience last night with an individual talking to me about taking transit. And in looking at this information today and seeing that perception of safety is the second highest reason to not engage in utilizing our transit services. And the person was telling me last night that she was going to a meeting from Hillsborough into over to Metro and wanted to take Max, great opportunity, right there and right there. And she said, while I was on Max, there were a number of people that were clearly homeless. And her cons- her her construct is they need to be out of the cold and warm. I can, you know, I can stand here. That's it. So I just want to lay that out. But my question really is, where is the intersection between our homeless programs, our housing programs, and transit to improve this safety piece? And I I just think that it there may be an opportunity there, and I didn't see it in any of of these pieces.
Yeah, I think that's a that's a big conversation and certainly there's systemic.
But if it's if it's Take that question and ask our SHS team to tell us more, not now.
Sure.
But at a later date or about the outreach workers and you know, certainly, since we have crossed jurisdictional boundaries, what what efforts are being made and what might we consider doing differently?
Absolutely. And I just bring it up because it's the second largest reason to not engage at a perception. So I think that it's a it's a good conversation to have.
Great. Teresa Roy, Rogers, rather.
May I just
Five, Rogers, I mean, let me drink some more coffee to that.
You need to refill.
Thank you to the team. I I had a briefing with you not long ago, so this is all fresh. I appreciate you all, all the work you did. I had a question about one of the slides. Service vision, which has maps. It said existing funded and then near term and then midterm to long term. Could is there quantifying element that come companies that piece or?
Terms of timeframe.
Timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, near term is thought, you know, the next five, five to ten years is near term. I mean, this is we out outline a twenty fifty being our kind of out year horizon. So mid to long term could be fifty plus years.
And then is that included in the report? So people know.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And then I really, you know, I I appreciate all the recommendations. I'm big supporting of the number five, I think, improve and amenities and connection at stops and stations. And I talked to you about like, what are some low-hanging fruits that we can improve in the meantime? So I I'm look forward to whatever we could do to improve. As I told you, there's so many people who are donating household chairs to be utilized at bus stops. So kudos to identifying some of those and putting local jurisdictions centered here because we we can make a difference and we can help improve some of that though.
Yeah, really appreciated that that feedback. And I think that 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 is a a great role that we can do to better support transit is making sure that we're not, we're at the time that we're making improvements on our roadways, looking for opportunities to either invest in or not preclude at least future investment in transit stop.
Well, let me let me insert a reminder here. Our cities do a great job of doing that because they provide the local match for grants. Forest Grove's done it, Hillsborough's done it, Beaverton's done it. That's what cities do. We don't have the local resources to invest in urban unincorporated areas like that. Maybe URMD funding can be diverted. I don't recall how it's written, but we don't have the non-county-wide revenue to invest in that.
Yeah, and I I would just add, Chair, I think that we're we're doing a number of things on our capital projects, some of which are in the unincorporated areas, some of which are in cities, but we we always coordinate very closely with TriMet on those, make sure we're incorporating their requests for stop or station enhancements, facilities. And I think to Commissioner Fies' point, we are also working on this idea that as service may be upgraded over time, the level of stop improvements may change. So what are ways that we can ensure that we don't preclude future upgrades to those facilities? Make sure we have enough space and the right way to do that or have sort of thought ahead a little bit about those future opportunities. And I appreciate the point to looking at potentially other alternative funding sources. And I would say the MSTIP Opportunity Fund has certainly been helpful in that regard and and thinking through some of the funding questions earlier, some of the things like transit signal priority that help buses move more quickly and reliably. Those are things that we're doing through some of our ITS investments, the intelligent transportation system investments. So we do have different funding sources where we can, as you say, sort of chip away at some of the the low-hanging fruit and start making those incremental improvements that can be very meaningful.
The comments would be these. One, obviously, we all appreciate the work. No one's going to take conception to your to your maps or what you are looking at in terms of improvements. But I've never quite understood how we, you know, how we integrate some of the other sources of funds with our transit components. And let me be more specific. When we did the MSTIP originally, it was determined that it would be strictly for roads and structures that would move people throughout the county from center to center, city to city. That didn't preclude that we would do enhancements or improvements to to those facilities that would facilitate transit. That was never ever thought that that would ever preclude that. And yep, and I don't want to jump over to a topic we're going to have later this week. I look at the MSTIP and I don't see that people are concentrating on those kinds of activities that integrate transit into those projects. We're looking at projects, but I I don't see the combination of the two. I I don't see in in my mind that there's integration with the cities in terms, because they do have different revenue sources, that twenty percent state gas tax, local gas tax. I I don't understand exactly how it integrates to this countywide transit system. That might be even just my fault, but to me, there's, they're all moving like interconnected cogs and wheels. They're separate wheels. I get it. But they they're all interconnected. So I don't know quite how those connect as well. I don't know in these surveys, and and maybe Nefisa knows better on that WCCC, but I don't know what the cities are saying because they are partners and they do have a fair amount of revenue. So because these lines, if I were to take the overlay of what I saw that you were having on your MSTIP maps, a lot of this is in corridors that you looked at, either you're funding now or funding later. And what are we doing to connect those cogs and those wheels so that those projects will be done or at least considered in those funding opportunities? And Stephen, you mentioned the, you know, Opportunity Fund. It's just me, not anybody else, but why should it have to be an Opportunity Fund? Why wouldn't it just be built into the project itself? I mean, that to me makes a lot more sense. Anyway, good work. I understand it's kind of baby steps, but it's a little lengthy to get to this point in terms of, not because any of you want it that way, but we're chipping away at this thing. It's a little tiny chips in a long process. And I'm hoping that all of you in ten years won't be looking at this again and saying, we make, we made these little tiny steps where we should have been insisting that it be much bigger. Need to be a little bit more bold. So those are my comments.
I I would say, Commissioner, I think we we have to do it all. We have to take those small opportunities. We have to keep pressing on those larger opportunities as well. And I would just say I give a lot of credit to Diame and his team and the cities, TriMet, everybody's working together. It really is an ecosystem. And there is a lot of coordination that's happening, and it doesn't come in front of the board frequently. But this is a good example. We've partnered with our cities to really develop this sort of countywide vision so that we're all somewhat aligned about what our transit priorities are. But but there is just, it it requires sort of doing it all. Just go go for every opportunity that we have, big or small.
All right. Well, we look forward to having this come back to us for acknowledgement. Thank you very much. And also, I want to give kudos to you because you are one of a few different topics that was slated for today's meeting, and yours actually happened, and the other three are not. So thanks for staying on on plan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we will reconvene at ten o'clock for our business meeting. See you soon in the auditorium.